Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the candidate forum for the West Northfield District 31 School Board. This forum is being sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Glenview Glencoe. The League is a nonpartisan political organization. We never support or oppose any candidate or political party. We are also a political organization and that we take action on governmental issues for which positions have been adopted through extensive member study and agreement. The League encourages informed and active participation in government. We work to increase understanding of major public policy issues and seek to influence public policy through education and advocacy. Thomas Jefferson, a long time ago, said that an educated citizenry is a vital requisite for our survival as a free people. It is for that reason that the League of Women Voters hosts forums like this so that we can educate the voters in our communities and they can make an informed vote when they cast their ballots. Let's introduce the school board candidates for District 31. Noah Frank, Elizabeth Kim, Megan McMillan, Nicholas Parfit, and Maria Vassalopoulos. These five candidates are running for three positions. The election will be held on April 4th, just a couple of weeks from now. The last day to register to vote online is tomorrow, March 19th. Early voting begins Monday and runs for about two weeks, including the weekends. The last day of early voting is April 3rd. With a schedule like this, even including counting for spring break, there are plenty of opportunities and ways to cast a ballot, either through mail-in or in-person and throughout the next two weeks. We encourage everybody who is watching this forum to make sure that you take advantage of one of these opportunities to cast that ballot. We will briefly go over some of the ground rules. The candidates will deliver two-minute opening statements in alphabetical order by first name. The questions that will be asked were selected by the League and the moderator from those submitted by the voters in the district. The moderator may ask a follow-up question at her discretion. Each question will be directed to all the candidates. Candidates will be given up to 90 seconds to respond to a question. Candidates will respond to questions in alternating order, which the moderator will keep track of. Candidates will be given up to 90 seconds for a closing statement, continuing with that alternating or alternating order that we're using for the questions. Statements and responses will be timed and prompts will be visible to the candidates and the viewers throughout the forum. The League of Women Voters is available for any questions regarding this forum or any election-related matters. You can reach us either through our website or by email at our l w v glens at gmail dot com. With that, I'd like to introduce our moderator, Lori Granawee. Lori is a member of the League of Women Voters of the Arlington Heights area. She is also the Mental Health Issues Specialist for the League of Women Voters of Illinois. With that, Lori, you may begin.
Thank you. We are going to begin with opening comments. Each candidate will have two minutes. We're going to begin with candidate Ken.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum. My name is Elizabeth Kim and I am a write-in candidate for District 31, which means my name will not appear on the ballot. I did try to get on legitimately and my name ultimately ended up getting dropped. For more on this, you can read at writeineelizabethkim dot com. Currently, I'm a resident of Northbrook. I am a stay-at-home parent to three. My oldest is a second grader at Winkelman and I have four-year-old twins. My education and professional background are in graphic design. I did grow up in the area. I'm a product of our wonderful public schools and I am Korean-American. I am really proud to be a part of this district. When my daughter started remote kindergarten, we had opted for remote learning and I was thrilled with the diversity of the student body. We have people from all over the world here and our students learn so much just by being in the same room together. Two things did become immediately apparent during remote kindergarten. One is that our teachers reign supreme. They're really good at what they do and they care deeply about the students. Secondly, as learners, our students, they cover a wide range of learning abilities. So while our board has done an incredible job navigating our whole community through a really tough last few years, our goal is for continued improvement. And the unique makeup of our student body could really be better represented on the board. Only a board that really represents the students they serve can set goals and policies in a way that meets the needs of each distinct learner. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Vassalopoulos.
Hi, I'm Maria Vassalopoulos. I live in Northbrook with my husband and two children. I have a second and a fourth grader. And I'm running for reelection, having completed four years. Very eager and excited to continue serving our community. I don't have any particular agenda. I'm not on this board with any self-serving interests. My agenda is simply to serve, to donate my time, expertise, and talents to support our district in any way I can. My only goal is to support students, teachers, and school leadership as we navigate the ever-changing landscape of education. My bachelor's and master's degrees are from Northwestern University in mathematics and school administration. And my doctorate is in I forgot what my doctorate is in. Oh my goodness, curriculum instruction and educational psychology. I've worked in education for over 25 years as a teacher, a leader, and administrator. And I continue to serve as a leader and speaker in many professional organizations. I'm excited to continue my work as an integral part of the school board to carry forward the work of our new strategic plan. I'm proud of our work today, to date, in the areas of academic excellence, curriculum, safety, finances, and communication. I volunteered in District 31, having worn many hats. Room parents are an enrichment volunteer, Girl Scout troop leader, to name a few, aside from several PTO-sponsored events as a volunteer. I believe in always putting students at the center of decision-making. And I will advocate to ensure that all students are looked at as individuals and are attended to as such. I appreciate your support. I thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this session. And I welcome any follow-up questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate McMillan.
Good afternoon. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I'm really appreciative of your time and the time for all of us to be able to speak. My name is Megan McMillan. I'm a resident of Glenview and have lived in the district for six and a half years with my husband and my two children. I have a third grader and a kindergartner at Winkelman. My kindergartner also attended three years in the district's early childhood program. And with young kids in the district, I have a vested interest in the long-term success and future success of this district. I'm running for a seat on the District 31 Board of Education because I am very proud of this community and I am committed to its ongoing success. During the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, I worked as a substitute teacher to help keep our schools open for in-person learning. What an eye-opening experience that was. I have served as co-president of the District 31 PTO for the past two years. In this role, I've worked alongside our administration, teachers, and support service staff. During my time as co-president, we made it a priority to ensure that no student was left out of our programs or activities due to financial constraints or any language barriers. We also prioritized reinstating several of the teacher appreciation initiatives that had been put on hold during the COVID pandemic. I hold a Masters of Science in Nutrition and have been working as a maternal and child healthcare provider for the past 10 years. Ensuring the physical and mental health and safety of both our students and staff is a top priority of mine. If nothing else, the public health crisis of the last three years has taught us that we need to have effective and equitable policies in place in order to protect our community. I have extensive knowledge in public health policy, specifically school board wellness policies. In addition to providing direct care, I'm a volunteer with several gun violence prevention programs. I believe my education and professional experience, as well as my advocacy work, provides an important perspective the Board of Education needs. Every member of our staff and all of our students deserve to feel safe, included, and supported. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Parfit.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and to my fellow candidates for this opportunity to participate. As a longtime resident of this community, a parent of children who attend District 31 schools and a committed community member, I'm honored to be running for the District 31 School Board. I've been a part of this wonderful community for 10 years and I have eight more years more to go. With my extensive business background as an experienced finance leader, I'm confident in my ability to make data-driven decisions and to advocate for fiscal responsibility within the district. As an immigrant from South Africa, living the American dream, I have a unique global perspective on diversity and the value of education and opportunities it provides for individuals to achieve their dreams and contribute to society. But beyond that, I have a deep empathy for our community and a strong passion for education. I've been actively involved in advocating for special education within the district as a true North NSCD board member. And I'm committed to ensuring that every child in our community has access to high-quality education that meets their unique needs. I'm thankful for the incredible teams and teachers and specialists in our district that work tirelessly to provide our students with the education and support that they need to succeed both academically and personally. I'm excited to be running alongside Megan McMillan and Noah Frank, two exceptional individuals who bring their own strengths and experiences to the table. Together, our diverse backgrounds and pragmatic approach will help us make a positive impact on District 31 School Board, bringing invaluable insights into the needs and priorities of the community, educators, parents, and students. We are committed to ensuring that our school remains student-sanited and that our decisions are always data-driven and fiscally responsible. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak with you all today.
Thank you. Candidate Frank.
Hello, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this important forum. My name is Noah Frank. I have a Winkelman first grader and a little wildcat with many years to come in the district. I'm grateful for the opportunity to run and serve West Northfield District 31 and to do so with my colleagues Nick Parfit and Megan McMillan. I have a Bachelor's in History and Economics, a Master's in Human Resources and Industrial Relations, and I earned my law degree all at the University of Illinois. I bring 15 years of legal and business experience as a partner and advocate to the board's governance. My efficient, pragmatic, and effective solutions have served me on prior boards and will enable me to ensure a cohesive school board. I have a history of nonprofit leadership as an executive board member and committee leader, adhering to the highest ethical standards, collaborative professionalism, and effective governance. I commit to studying issues and information as the board clarifies the district's purpose, sets direction and policy, and allocates resources for our students. My values matter. I'm excited to champion diversity and inclusivity, advocating for all students and not just a single demographic. Nick, Megan, and I have young children who will be in the district for the next eight and more years and we intend to serve District 31 as representatives, stewards, and stakeholders. In the end, I'm accountable to you, the community, and so I'm asking you to vote. And vote for me, Nick, and Megan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we are going to go start with our first question. First question is, the pandemic brought with it unprecedented stresses and challenges for school districts. What is your assessment of how District 31 handled those challenges and what would you have done differently? And to start this out, we are going to start with candidate Vassalopoulos.
Thank you. It was a really tough time for everyone, especially for schools, parents, students. It affected everyone. I can say I'm very proud of how our district handled everything the pandemic dealt us. We were constantly navigating a changing landscape. We led with flexibility and creativity and we were constantly pivoting. We were one of the few districts that came out and were able to retain a continuum of services while offering both parents and teachers choice in either remote or in-person learning. Our board was very supportive of school leadership. We did everything they needed. We never said no. We did what it took to have education continue. One thing I think all schools could have done better is taken some lessons learned from the pandemic and from how we've learned students learn and teachers teach to be able to take some strengths, you know, carry some positives forward to better affect learning in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate McMillan.
Thank you so much. I actually echo a lot of what Maria said. I think our school district handled the COVID-19 pandemic as best they could with the information they had and the resources they have. And I'm actually really proud of the way our district handled it. I think it was very smart of our district to offer both in-person and remote learning. I think it really showed that the administration was aware of the different needs of our school district and the diverse needs of our school district, whether it was concerns about health, concerns about childcare, concerns about, you know, elderly people living in the home, you know, multi-generation homes. I think they took into account the teachers' needs and the teachers' opinions. And I'm really actually very proud of how our district handled the COVID-19 pandemic. I think one thing that came out of it was that we all know that remote learning probably isn't the most effective learning opportunity for most kids. I think it probably did very well for some kids, but I think the majority of students probably will do better with in-person learning. However, I think it was, there was definitely a time and a place for remote learning to be offered. And so I think our school district fared very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Parfit.
I have to agree. I had three children navigating the pandemic through the school district. Daughter was in middle school and the little guys were in kindergarten and pre-K. And, you know, the approach that the school board took for navigating, you know, the rapidly changing environment brought on about by the pandemic was impressive. And I'm really thankful for how the board stepped up and went through it all. There were definitely challenges and learning along the way. You know, I think there's definitely an opportunity here to go back and reflect upon what was implemented when and how things were approached to kind of better prepare ourselves for, you know, challenges in the future. You know, especially navigating the challenges of moving from middle school to high school is apparent in kind of how my daughter was prepared for the, you know, high school life. As board member, I'm going to definitely work with my fellow board members to, you know, ensure that we are prepared for all kinds of risks and put in policies and procedures for kind of helping everybody navigate that. That's part of my business background is understanding what could happen and what we should do about it and navigating and mitigating those risks. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Frank.
Thank you. I'm pleased that District 31 navigated the pandemic based on the information available and has continued to adhere to state laws. However, these are really the minimum requirements. As in-house counsel for a senior living provider, we dealt with a lot of the same serious health and safety issues and opinion issues. As a district, we must ensure that the schools are safe and a healthy refuge for students, teachers, and staff. Some of the things we can do better, we can continue to evaluate our risk management policies and procedures and ensure that they are state-of-the-art, make sure that we are ready to go should there ever be a similar or situation like this and just be prepared. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Ken.
Our family was actually new to the district in 2020. We'd been living here, but my daughter was starting kindergarten. And we were really anxious going into the school year. And we listened to every board meeting leading up to the first day of school. And, you know, I'm really thankful for the fact that the district offered choice. It was a really good year academically for my daughter, actually. Her teacher was phenomenal. We really got a look into like 17 other families' lives at the time and just seeing how different, you know, everybody's needs were. And there was some flexibility as far as if, you know, family really needed to go back to in-person if you traveled back into remote learning. But, you know, all in all, they did so well and they were so communicative the entire time. The PTO put together really great events that were safe for all students and families to attend, you know, when it was okay to do so. And, yeah, we've been, we were just very pleased with everything that happened during the pandemic.
Thank you. Next question. What do you see as the top needs of the district and how would you address them? And we are going to start with candidate McMillan.
Thank you so much for the question. I feel my top need or the top need for this district is to focus on future staffing needs. We have, as we've mentioned several times, a very diverse population. We have 25% of our students speaking a language other than English as their first language. We have about 14% of our students requiring either IDPs or 504s. So they're considered part of the special education program. We also have quite a few number of students whose families are considered newcomers, meaning they're very, they're new to this country. So not only do they, most of them speak another language as their primary language, they've also, this is their first time here. And so we have shortages that need to be filled as those numbers increase and they're increasing rapidly. So I think the biggest challenge facing our district is how to staff those positions, translators, special ed teachers, teachers that speak languages such as Banglion and Russian, and making sure that we have a budget that can appropriately staff our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Parfit.
I believe that District 31's top priority should be to place students at the center of every decision while being fiscally responsible and data-driven. It's essential to listen to the students' needs and wants to create a vision and measurable goals that are attainable for the future using research-based strategies and materials. I think we can drive towards that common goal. We've seen over the last several years that there are, you know, unique and challenging situations that can present themselves through, you know, every year and every academic year for families and teachers and students. And I believe that there will be more to come, you know, navigating these complexities from an economic, social, and management perspective on finances and resources are going to be crucial. As board member, I tend to work closely with my colleagues and, you know, make the informed decisions that support the students, school administration, and families within the community. I plan on drawing upon my real-world experience and education to, you know, be that valuable perspective on the board. I understand the importance that, you know, it is of making sound decisions that are grounded in practical considerations that take all the stakeholders' needs into account. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Frank.
This is a really great question. Thank you. Two of my biggest issues are celebrating District 31's unique diversity and excellence of governance. District 31 enjoys over 40 languages and so many cultures and traditions. We are unique to enjoy each and all of these as a global community preparing our children today for the world of tomorrow. It's this distinct chopped salad approach where we acknowledge our diversity and use it as a springboard to grow. As a board member, I will work to ensure that diverse voices and views are recognized. As it relates to governance, as a board member, I will bring my prior experiences to 31 to serve as a steward of excellence as we address the challenges head-on. This includes topics like fiscal responsibility, COVID preparation, gun safety, and reproductive health. Sometimes we'll have to make tough decisions and we have to make those on behalf of the community. It's important to get feedback and input so that our decisions are appropriately aligned and reflective of our communal values and strategies. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Ken.
Um, you know, it's been said a lot and I'm sure it'll be said more, but the most pressing issues our district faces today is we have such a diversity of students culturally, learning ability, socioeconomic status. And it's really challenging to understand how to meet the needs of each and every student when we have such a, you know, varied body. It's not homogeneous and so it requires like a really detailed approach that, you know, other districts may not have to contend with. And, you know, the perspective that I bring to the board is I am Korean-American and there are a lot of people and families in our community who are Korean. And I'm a child of immigrants. So growing up, you know, my parents and I, we had a language and cultural barrier and that's something that I know a lot of our students deal with. I recognize it when I'm in the school, when I'm with my Girl Scouts. I'm also the oldest in my family, so I was kind of learning alongside my parents as they navigated the school systems in a new country and, you know, sharing that information with my younger brother and sister. And so I think it's important for a board member to have and share in the students their actual experiences.
Thank you. Candidate Vassalopoulos.
Thank you. Top need. You know, our school board has really left or has the district, now it's a district, has the district in really great shape. However, I think finances are not unlimited, but the growing needs of our district and our students are. I think we need to have a creative plan for navigating the current teacher shortage, which is about to get even worse, creatively plan for recruitment efforts and retention so that we can also maintain our small class size, which is something we're very proud of. Our EL population is growing. The students have growing needs. We need to work to maintain support for EL as well as special services. You know, we need to use data, I think, not as much holistically, but to start to really drill down to individual students and look at students as individuals. I think that's where we need to do a little bit of extra work. You know, and I also think we need to work on community engagement for some of our underrepresented constituents and diversity and representation on our school board as well. You know, I also am a child of immigrants. My parents moved here from Greece, you know, as young adults. And finally, I think we need to provide support for leadership so that they can best support the teachers to just navigate us through all these upcoming changes and needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. What do you see as the role of school board members as opposed to teachers, administrators, parents? What do you see the role of school board members in ensuring that the district effectively serves its students and the larger community? And we are going to start with candidate Parfit.
Thank you. I think the role of the school board is to, you know, actively listen to the community, to parents, to the administration, and balance all the competing priorities across, you know, limited resources, the evolving landscape of the, you know, greater world and all the issues and challenges that face everybody in a day-in, day-out, you know, perspective and offering the guidance and unique perspectives that the school board members bring. You know, for example, business experience. Immigrant myself, you know, coming from South Africa, bringing all those real-world and real experiences to understand and appreciate the unique makeup of the school district and each of the situations and challenges. And each of the situations and challenges that all the stakeholders in the school face as. You know, as we make those decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Frank.
Thank you. Ultimately, the school board is accountable to the community. We are representatives elected from the community and intended to serve them. Our role is to govern. We employ the superintendent as our CEO of the schools. That's our employee and that's who we monitor and manage. We set the direction and the policy and we allocate the resources in a way that meets the community's needs. There's a lot of different needs in the communities. There's the students. There's people who think, well, I don't have students anymore. What do I care about the schools? But they do, because it impacts their taxes and it impacts their land value. And we need to monitor our progress towards those goals. So in the end, our job is to govern in a way that effectively and efficiently meets the needs of the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Kim.
It's a really good question. There is a distinction to be made. My understanding of the role of school board member is that we are essentially stewards in a larger system. And, you know, we all serve temporary terms and so in that limited time, we have to do our best to prioritize. The needs of the district and to empower and equip our administration and teachers and staff. Through the decision-making that we do. And it is our job to listen to the community and their needs. Primarily, primarily the needs of the students as they bring them forward. And to make the best decisions on behalf of the students.
Thank you. Candidate Vassalopolis.
You're getting good at that. So role of a school board member. You know, it's, it's more limited, I think, than people think it is. We don't have this unlimited power. Our, our role is very specific. We help manage, not even manage, but approve the financial allocations of the district. And we hire and evaluate the superintendent. You know, we, we ensure that the superintendent puts the right people in the right positions and that everyone has the support they need to do their job. You know, we set policy, yes, but that's generally driven by law. So. You know, there are quite a bit of limitations in terms of what we do as school board members. And it's not about our own personal needs and agendas. You know, it really is about community representation. You know, one of the things that I've thought a lot about over the last few years, especially as we went through the pandemic. You know, it's hard for us to really understand what our diverse community generally needs. And so one of the things I really want to work at, if I'm re-elected. Is to really push to have a board committee or a board subcommittee for community engagement. So we can really seek out better ways to actually have that representation and that direct feedback. From community members that generally don't come forward to share their thoughts and ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate McMillan.
Thank you so much. The school board essentially is made up of elected officials. So we are elected to represent the needs of the community. I would say that the needs of the students absolutely are probably at the forefront of. The decision-making that the school board does. We are responsible for governing the district. The teachers are responsible for education and I really think it's important to make that distinction. I really prefer that teachers make the decisions when it comes to what's being taught in the schools curriculum. I don't think that is the job of a school board to make curriculum. Maybe very broad curriculum decisions, but ultimately the teachers are the ones teaching. The school board is responsible for governance. We are responsible for holding the superintendent accountable. The school, school board sets forth a mission and a strategic plan. For the district and then we are responsible for holding each other accountable. To that mission and strategic plan and working collaboratively and effectively together. We are also responsible for the finances of the district and ultimately being accountable to all of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. Why should a district that only has two elementary schools and all of its related administrative expenses? Exist rather than being consolidated with one of the other surrounding districts? And for this question, we are gonna start with candidate Frank.
That's a really good question and it's a topic that merits further fact-based investigation before giving an off-the-cuff response. I think that a lot of times, people think. That there's economies of scale, except they don't actually understand where the finances are and what all those. Economy of scale really are. You have administrators with contracts that would need to be resolved. You have different cultures, different ethos in the schools. Things that they give parents pride, right? Where the Winkelman Wildcats. So it's a good question, but it's something that, that deserves investigation and study. And I'm happy to come back to you on that topic in the future.
Thank you. Candidate Kim.
Thank you. It is a good question and one that, to be honest, I haven't considered before. I understand the argument that's being made. And very much in the same ways Noah just said, I do think it does require more thought and research. I think the one thing that is a little concerning is. Class size management, if that were to happen and doing it in a methodical way, but. Also, I feel like our district has a really unique flavor. And it's really unlike even its adjacent districts. And. I think it's important to maintain that. I think we're doing a lot of things well. For being such a small district. I think we have a lot of advantages because we're a small district. A lot of resources that are available to us specifically because of our student demographics. But I do agree that it does require more thought that I haven't given to it before this, this question was asked of me. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Vassalopolis.
Thanks. Consolidation. So it has been discussed before in our district's history. As you can tell, we didn't go that route and there's a lot of history behind that, more than I have time for in ninety seconds. You know, I chose to move my family here because it's such a beautiful and unique district. We're not a mega district and that's the beauty of our district. Could you save money on administrative costs and on scale? Sure, but then you have to say at what expense? You know, you want teachers to lose their autonomy and have everything be very. You know, cut and dry and directed. We're not that kind of district. Do we want our underrepresented students and students sitting on school buses for an hour every morning and waking up at six o'clock? Probably not. Do we want our students to have fewer opportunities to, to shine? In the band, in the musicals and in athletics and all these other niche programs we have? You know, a small district affords our students so many opportunities that they wouldn't get, they'd be lost in a mega district. And I think that's why many of us chose to move to this district. You know, I, I, I think we just need to sit back when, you know, whenever this topic comes up and really value. The beauty of our small community and how much it has to offer. You know, that's all on that topic, but, but there is a lot of history there for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate McMillan.
Thank you so much. Like Maria, I have heard, I've been here long enough to hear some of these conversations previously. There has been talk about. Consolidation with the district right next to us. I know that some of the concerns brought up were the difference in property taxes between homes in their district and homes in our district. And I also, you know, I love that we have a small district. It is definitely one of the benefits of District Thirty-One. I appreciate the fact that we are kind of a hidden gem. And when you mentioned that your kids are in District Thirty-One, they go, where is that? What district is that? What school is that? I kind of like that. You know, we're small fish in a big pond and I think that does allow our students to have a lot of opportunities that they might not have if the districts were consolidated. I worry about the allocation of resources. It might afford us some more, but I definitely think we would lose a lot of the. The, the current resources and opportunities that are available to our teachers. And I, our students, I think, would be lost in a consolidation. And so I. I'm happy that we haven't done that yet, but obviously I think it is something that will continue to come up and we'll have to continue to look at. The pros and cons of that situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Parfit.
Like everybody said, you know, this is an incredibly complex decision that could have, you know, significant impacts, not just on the community, but especially the. Students, teachers and staff and, you know, again. Such a deep topic, you know, would absolutely need, you know, time to evaluate all options, if it was even considered in any way, shape or form. You know, my, my experience in, in many plans that I've reviewed over my years, you know. Things like this don't always lead to the, the savings and could quite frankly lead to unintended consequences. So, you know. I think this kind of topic is, you know, could go any number of ways and. Should, should be thought through very, very carefully. I've been in the district, like I said, for ten years and we moved five years ago to stay in the same district and. That's what we love about District Thirty-One is that it is District Thirty-One and we are, you know, unique and special and, you know. Being part of a school board that represents the community, the size that it is. You know, means we can be a lot closer to the needs of each of the families within the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are now going to do our ninety-second. Closing remarks and we are gonna start with candidate Vassalopolis.
Thank you. You know, I think the work of a school board is really monumental. The ability to provide support to leadership as they continue to work towards implementing. Our quality strategic plan is not something to be taken lightly. Add to that the need to keep finances at the forefront and stretch every dollar to its capacity. It's a monumental task. Thankfully, we have a great team in place and regardless of whether I'm re-elected, I'm excited at the future work that's yet to be accomplished. I think we're very lucky to have such a qualified slate of candidates for this election. And regardless of the outcome, I know our district is in great hands. I'm here to support our community no matter what, support our district. My goal is to serve. And in whatever capacity my skills and talents are needed. Grateful to contribute my time and we all have the same goal to have excellent schools and students that thrive. And together we can work to support that goal. Together we're better. I won't tell you who to vote for amongst the five of us. Vote for one, two, three, none. I do hope you vote, however. You know, I, I'm happy to answer any follow-up questions that anyone from the community has or, or any of our slate of board members. I think everybody knows how to reach me via email or, or phone, PTO directory is where it's at. So thank you and thank you to the League of Women Voters for, for hosting such a valuable session for our community and I, I really hope this forum helped. The community just learn a little bit more about each of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate McMillan.
Yes, thank you again so much for being here, Lori, and thanks to the League of Women Voters. I hope my dedication and passion for the school district has been evident. Since my daughter started in kindergarten four years ago, I have immersed myself in this community through various roles. Including as a room parent, a substitute teacher, and as co-president of the PTO for the past two years. I believe my professional experience as a healthcare provider and as a business owner uniquely qualify me for a position on the Board of Education. As a healthcare provider, I will work tirelessly to advocate for policies and a budget. That prioritize the well-being of our staff and our students. Safe and healthy schools are vital for academic success. My ability to manage complex situations and to collaborate and communicate effectively. With others in order to achieve desired outcomes are essential skills that will serve me well. On the school board. Among the candidates and current board members, I'm the only gun safety candidate volunteering my time. To ensure our schools and communities are safe from gun violence. I'm the only resident of Bunview and the only one with kids slated to go to Glenbrook South High School. Additionally, as the mother of two children with chronic health conditions and different learning needs, I am familiar with our special education program. And I'll continue to advocate for a learning environment that is inclusive of all our students. And for the resources and faculty that we need to make this happen. I'm proud of our school district and I value our incredible diversity. If elected, I will hold myself accountable to the mission of the district. And vow to keep the best interests of our children at the forefront of every decision I make.
Thank you. Candidate Parfit.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and my fellow candidates for this opportunity to speak directly to the voters. I believe that everyone wants the same thing. A school district that provides quality education for all students in a fiscally responsible manner. I've spent my entire professional career in business and what I've learned is the value of making strategic investments in order to make, to achieve long-term success. As a parent of children in this district, I've also seen firsthand the dedication and commitment of our teachers and staff. And I understand the importance of providing them with the resources and support that they need to help our students thrive. As a member of the District Thirty-One School Board, I'll bring a pragmatic, data-driven approach to decision-making. I'll work tirelessly to ensure that we make every decision with this in the best interest of our students, our community and our taxpayers. I'm committed to transparency and accountability and believe that we must engage with all stakeholders, including. Parents, teachers and administrators and community members to ensure that we are making informed decisions that reflect the values and priorities of our community. In addition, I have a deep empathy for the challenges faced by students with special needs and their families and I'm committed to ensuring that they receive the support and resources they need. To thrive in our schools. With my running mates, Megan McMillan and Noah Frank, I think we bring diversity of thought and a positive. Collaborative approach to the school board and, you know, together we're committed to ensuring that the school district provides. High-quality education while remaining fiscally responsible. Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you. Candidate Frank.
Thank you again for your time to League of Women Voters for hosting this important forum and especially to the voters who made it to our closing statements. You're there. We've shared a lot of information with you today and you've heard a lot of things that sound good. Some that aren't within the purview of the board and those are red herrings. But if we re-center on what the board does and why United for District Thirty-One is the best slate, myself, Megan and Nick. The board's role is to govern. We employ the superintendent as our only employee. We manage and evaluate the performance, including her management of staff and teachers. We set the direction and policy for the district. Allocate resources and monitor and evaluate progress towards goals. Will remain accountable to the community. What you've heard from me, Megan McMillan and Nick Parfit, is that we are consummate professionals skilled at investigating and learning about the details of issues. Before making from-the-hip decisions. I can't promise or pretend to know everything, but I can. Commit to becoming informed before making decisions that impact your children and mine. I will stay current on education and board issues and trends. I'll prepare for and attend the school board meetings. I will share my thoughts before decisions are made and I will advocate for all students. I'm asking for your vote along with Megan McMillan and Nick Parfit because. We want to accomplish the district's mission, vision and values. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And lastly, candidate Kim.
Thank you. In closing, I wanted to talk about a feeling. It's universal. It's the feeling you get when you meet someone from your hometown. It's the feeling you get when you meet someone who attended your university. It's the same feeling you get when you meet. Um, it's the same feeling you get when you meet a fellow twin twin mom or a Seinfeld enthusiast. Um, these shared experiences and interests create an instantaneous connection that is powerful and unique. Uh, I'm calling for a board that creates these types of connections over and over again with more and more of those in our community, especially our students. Uh, these connections, they grow trust between leadership and the community they serve. Uh, these connections empower the community. Um, the power of shared experiences cannot be underestimated, especially in our district today. I'm confident I speak for many when I say I long for a board that one day contains seven individuals from distinct groups within our community. Uh, when all points of view are represented, when the board better reflects the students they serve, the natural byproduct is the equity that we all strive for. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Really appreciate your time. It's been a pleasure to be here.